So let's call the order of this meeting. The common council for February seventeenth. I'd like to ask you all to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Will we call the roll, please?
Mayor Coniston.
Here.
District one, Morissette.
Here.
District two, Brokaw.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Wyland.
Here.
District five, O'Malley.
Here.
District six, Burchill, is absent.
Mr. Burchill's excused, so everyone's here and we're ready to get started. First, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If you would like to speak to the council tonight about any item that is not listed on tonight's meeting agenda, this is your chance. I'd like to ask that your comments be limited to issues that might have an impact on the city of Hudson and that the common council may address at a future meeting. If you'd like to speak, this is your chance. You can come up to the lectern and give us your name and go ahead. Anyone? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I ask that the fence permit be pulled from the consent agenda. Will you read the rest of those, please?
To approve the regular meeting minutes of February fourth, two thousand and ten, to approve claims for payment in the amount of four hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars and six cents. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license to Saint Patrick's Home and School Association to sell beer and wine April tenth, two thousand and ten at the annual Saint Patrick's School Gala, four oh three Saint Croix Street.
To approve the issuance of a Class B beer, Class C wine license to Pine Hill Services, LLC, doing business as Dolce at one oh six Buckeye Street, contingent upon the surrender of the current license held by Stonewood Furniture Incorporated. To approve the Monica Jensen race to be held in Lakefront Park on Saturday, June fifth, two thousand and ten, to place on file the quarterly report of the water utility director, the fire department annual report, the public utility commission minutes of February ninth, two thousand and ten, and the joint library board minutes of December fourteenth, two thousand and nine, and January eleventh, two thousand and ten. That is all.
Okay, thank you.
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Okay, so those items are approved and we'll move on to, from the plan commission, a conditional use permit, application by Sprint, Nextel Wireless, Site Services, Todd Young, for a one hundred and ninety-foot wireless tower and site build at four eight one County Road A at the USA Fence Site. It's part of section twenty, T twenty-nine, N, R nineteen W of the town of Hudson. Comes to us on recommendation from the Joint Extraterritorial Zoning Committee. Community Development Director Dennis Darnold is here to tell about this item.
Todd Young, Sprint, Nextel Services here also to answer any questions that you may have. And the site of the proposed cell phone tower is on County Trunk A as you go east of town past the Perry Elementary School. County Trunk A radiuses to the north and then goes radiuses back to the east. So this is basically south of, excuse me, Durro Bag Facility, the property is zoned for industrial use. The Extraterritorial Zoning Committee's recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit for the wireless telecommunication tower and ancillary ground facilities at four eight one County Trunk Highway A to Sprint, Nextel Wireless, and Site Services with the following conditions. There are several conditions, but typically this type of use does have a number of conditions attached to it. Do you want me to enumerate those or?
They were in the sheet. You want to have them all read out?
Anyone does, we will. Any member of the public here that is here specifically on this item? We did already have a public hearing. Anybody here in objection? And I don't think we need to read them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Todd Young did ask me on my issue sheet, I mentioned that within the contained area, the fenced area, there would be buildings, they're all cabinets, photographs, cover photograph I provided to all the persons, and the mayor are examples of those cabinets. So just a matter of clarification, they're not buildings per se, they're cabinets as that photograph indicates.
Danny, what was any of the feedback you might have had?
Well, we had-
Just a room.
Certainly. There were two, there were five people at the public hearing, other than the board and myself. The two representative property owner were the property owners. Third was Mr. Todd Young from the applicant, two others gentlemen lived across the street on Sherman Road, was the closest resident. His primary concern was whether the frequencies from this type of service may interfere with his home wireless systems. The answer is essentially no. Now, there is a process, a formal process that was indicated in the application that, you know, there is a grievance process, you can go to the federal communication, the commission and, but basically the response from Mr. Young was typically those may happen if there's a malfunction in the equipment, and at that point, they can respond very quickly because a lot of it's checked by computer. So it's a fairly easy fix and a quick fix. The second person that was there, I checked today, she lives about a mile away the bird flies, northwest of the site. One of her questions was, you know, why is the city involved in this and why is it even being questioned if it's on private property? Then there's a second question she had, you know, she had some concerns on general appearance, but really didn't stipulate that she was opposed to it. Those are the only two persons here in the general public that commented at the public hearing.
Thanks.
Mr. Young is here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Young, are you familiar with all the conditions on the back of the sheet and they're all acceptable?
Yes, Your Honor, I am. I've read through the sheets, confirmed with Sprint, Nextel, all the conditions are within all of the normal circumstances provided by Sprint, Nextel on the leases and also for the community.
Okay. So this is here under our extraterritorial zoning powers. I guess this made second time in the last twelve months now. I think the first time that committee met, we figured out it was first time in something like fifteen years or nineteen years or something that it met. And so the question from the resident of the town of Hudson is why is this, why is the city dealing with this? We do have extraterritorial rights within that mile and a half out from city limits on some certain things like this where this tower will be clearly visible from miles away because it's a tall tower. We have some say in its placement and approval. I see no reason not to approve this.
Is there a question?
Yep.
The tower is short, doesn't have to be lighted, but it also should, there's no need for any parabolic.
And there are none on the drawings. I just want verification, there are no parabolics on this tower.
Are you referring to the microwave dishes, parabolic dishes? Yes. Yes, there won't be any parabolic dishes on the initial installation. Most of the carriers now prefer to use either fiber optic connectivity or coming through copper T ones.
Good, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion?
Move for approval, committee recommendation and all the outlining conditions.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the conditional use permit with the conditions on the back side of our issue sheet. Any discussion?
All in favor? Yes, sir.
This is going to sound like a stupid question, but actually in my business it's not. I'm in, kind of in the business you're in. We have had the greatest difficulty in the past with ladybugs in these things.
Ladybugs?
And do you ever have any problems with them shorting your equipment out?
I can't say it hasn't happened. There have been issues where, you know, ants in some cases. The thing is, that's important about this, everything in that equipment is alarmed if there are any power shorts, if there's any kind of equipment malfunction, frequencies going off. A network control center, a nationwide network control center alerts the local technicians who respond in kind in a very quick way to get out there, find the problem isolated. The other benefit is everything inside that cabinet is a module, which basically if a power supply blows because of a ladybug or some kind of infestation, that module can be removed and replaced within a matter of minutes.
Good, thanks. All right, good. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries and permits approved. Let's move on to the applications for operators licenses. Number three, under the finance committee, we have a recommendation from the finance committee to approve both the two regular operators licenses on the issue sheet for Bridget Kelly and Heidi Jacobson, as well as-
I recuse myself, Mr. Mayor.
-the temporary operators licenses for April tenth for the Saint Patrick's School Annual Gala for Barb Carls and Lila Amernick. Mr. Morissette has recused. What's your pleasure?
Move for approval. Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve these. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and the licenses are approved. Next, we've got the application for a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license for Saint Patrick's Home.
Consent.
Pardon me, that was on consent. Next, we've got consider the job description and to consider proceeding with advertising for the part-time IT position, IT support position. The recommendation from finance committee was slightly different than this issue sheet. It was after some discussion regarding developing a process in which our IT staff would keep track of their hours spent on various projects through a, how would we call it, an electronic tracking, time tracking system?
Some type of job costing.
So that job costing could be done. That provided we developed that, we would recommend that we review and approve this position description. There were a couple of typographic things, but no major changes recommended. And that we would authorize Devon to begin the recruitment process. This item was budgeted to be approximately half time, but not more than twenty-two thousand dollars of salary. So that's our, that's our recommendation from finance.
Is that budgeted?
It was budgeted this year. So the suggestion from Mike at budget time was that he, his hours would be reduced somewhat and-
We took a reduction in pay.
Reduction in pay and a little more vacation and that we would fit this position in. Other questions?
Move for approval. I'll second.
The motion in a second to approve, discussion?
One of whatever this is, approximately twenty hours a week, so our issue tracking and time tracking system is to help us manage that time and what it's being applied to.
Other comments? All right. Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries and we'll start advertising for that position. Number seven is an update on the two thousand and nine room tax revenues and consider options for dispersments. We are in the difficult position of having room tax revenues that are significantly down from last year and from what was budgeted for two thousand and nine. Over the last several years, they've been relatively stable. I think the last year that we didn't make budget was maybe around two thousand and two. This year, as I reported after the third quarter collections came in, we were significantly behind two thousand and eight and behind budget and likely weren't going to make our budgeted revenues on that. This has been area-wide and nationwide that the number of hotel stays are down. I believe it's due to general economic factors, but nonetheless, what it's meant is that our overall revenues for two thousand and nine came in at one hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine, which was nineteen thousand dollars under what we had budgeted, and I believe it was about fifteen percent less than two thousand and So if you turn to the spreadsheet that was attached to the issue sheet-
And those of you that did not get them in color, I apologize. You were all supposed to get colored copies. Somebody-
I have an extra color, someone.
Some of you did, some of you didn't.
I'm going to pass that to Pam. To give you a little bit of background, for two thousand and nine and for prior years, our community subsidy payments were not a firm commitment. We have always budgeted an amount and it was contingent on or pending what the actual collections were. At budget time this last year, in acknowledgement that this situation was going to be very uncomfortable, we decided that for two thousand and ten, we would switch that around a little bit and we would make a firm commitment to our community subsidy grantees, and the chamber would be on a total flex basis according to what the actual collections were, whether it's good or bad, whether it's under budget or over budget. But for two thousand and nine and prior years, we have not made commitments to, to the grantees. We have simply budgeted what we anticipate the allocation might be. And so here's our situation. What is left to be granted for, based on what was budgeted to be granted after the fourth quarter collections is a total of just over nineteen thousand dollars. Twelve thousand and eight of it to the Chamber of Commerce Tourism Bureau and six thousand three hundred and seventy-five to a variety of non-chamber organizations. That nineteen thousand dollars that was left to be dispersed is approximately twice of what we'll actually have. What we have left from two thousand and nine funds for dispersment is nine thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. My recommendation was that we should reduce each of those remaining payments by half. Essentially what that will mean will be those people will all receive one-half of their fourth quarter payment, essentially seven eighths for two thousand and eight. So they've already received their full first, second, and third quarter payment despite the fact we recognized after the third quarter that we were going to be short. We didn't take any action. I merely informed you and we waited to see what would happen in the fourth quarter. At this point now, it's time to reconcile that. So I recommended that we would cut them. So to take an example, for the Hockey Association where we had allocated twenty-five hundred dollars within the budget, they have received three-quarters of that in three quarterly payments, they've received eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. Their scheduled fourth quarter payment was six hundred and twenty-five dollars. We don't have the money. My recommendation was that that should be reduced by half and so they would get three hundred and twelve dollars. And the same would go for everyone in the third column on this sheet, from the chamber down through the FIPS, the Hockey Association, Historical Society, Senior Citizens, Youth Action, Hudson, and the Cemetery Association. Finance committee discussed this. The vote ultimately was three to zero in favor of it at the finance committee, though none of us like it. It's not an easy thing to have to do. So that's the recommendation. Discussion?
If I can start the discussion?
Go ahead.
I think that Lori did an excellent job when we adopted the new plan that you just referred to of explaining how it would work. Basically, the chamber was going to only eat what it could bake itself and that we made commitments to these community organizations. I would believe then that in that spirit, we should not take fifty percent away of their fourth quarter payments. We can deduct that money from the chamber, which is getting the lion's share here of twelve thousand dollars, and pay one hundred percent of what we promised to these organizations for fourth quarter, and the chamber will get to eat whatever it bakes itself as we had discussed. I think that's the proper way to do it.
Yes, and we did talk about that at finance. If you, if you'd like, I mean, that can be your motion. There's, there's no way to make everyone happy. Just so it's clear, these were not commitments. In the past, they have not been commitments, but in the future and starting, our intent was that for two thousand and ten and on, from when we did that budget process last fall, in light of seeing what was going to happen here, we decided not to let this happen again in the future. That's fine for the future. You're suggesting now that we go back and apply that to two thousand and nine in hindsight, and we have the right to do that. I mean, that's definitely an option.
And I will move that we do so, so that we don't cut the legs out from under these community organizations.
Is there a second to that motion? Do you understand his motion? So that we have nine thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars left to be distributed. What Scott, I believe, is saying is that we would pay out in the third column, we'd pay seventeen fifty to the FIPS, six twenty-five to Hockey, eleven twenty-five to the Historical Society and Senior Citizens and the Cemetery, each of them eleven twenty-five, and Youth Action Hudson would get six hundred and twenty-five, and then someone will have to do some math, but whatever is remaining at that point of the two thousand and nine revenue would go to the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau as their fourth quarter allocation.
About thirty-four hundred dollars.
Is there a second to Scott's motion?
I'll second that. That was my discussion at finance because I felt like that was the road we were going down, and I would like to see these organizations supported as much as we can.
All right, Lori?
I appreciate the compliment.
Okay.
But it was not my intent for, for those new room tax dollar allocation, I guess, guidelines to apply to the past year. And I think in some ways that's unfair. The, the community organizations represented here didn't apply for grants. They were not issued formal letters, I don't believe, saying that they were guaranteed a certain amount of money. We all can appreciate what's happened the last year economically, and actually, I think just the opposite. I think it would be the wrong time to take that amount of money from our tourism bureau. You know, I, I think what these organizations have received up till this point has been significant. Some of them applied for grants for next year and have received guaranteed amounts, but I think it's, I just think it's wrong to retroactively apply our new guidelines to last year. I don't think that was ever our intent and certainly wasn't mine. It was going forward, so I would not be supporting the motion that's on the table.
I'd agree. I, I think it's the wrong time. We can't go back. We, let's spread what we have and do what we can in the obvious economic issues we have, we have in front of us, but at the same time, I still like to see on the next upcoming agendas, us talk about raising the room tax. It would also help alleviate some of this that we're running into, room tax for our travelers coming to the city. So I won't support the motion.
I think it's tough to, to cut any of these, or, you know, between the chamber. They, they do fabulous work, but these nonprofit organizations also do in the community, and it's going to be a tough decision because, you know, taking, taking, cutting these in half, did you talk about any reduction or any, any calculation in the chamber? Funding as part of your-
You mean, other than giving them the seven eighths, just like these others?
Right.
Well, that was what I suggested, because it seemed quite a simple solution, and we had nineteen thousand left to give out and we had just about exactly half of that. But that doesn't, and so the fifty percent cut in the remaining allocations was, seemed like an expedient and relatively fair across-the-board solution to me. You know, I, I can give you this for insight. Some of these organizations may be severely desperate for the money, others maybe not so. The chamber, I did call and we talked, I mean, clearly they were paying attention when I announced after the third quarter how far down the revenues were and recognized that that, that this fourth quarter payment is far from a commitment. You know, I haven't talked with each of these other groups, but I think it was in the paper and pretty well advertised that after the third quarter, that our revenues were down significantly. So everyone relying on that room tax revenue should have been aware that, you know, we're running behind fifteen or sixteen percent. That's probably what's going to end up happening at the end of the year is that what you thought you were going to get is likely to be cut by about that amount, and so a twelve and a half percent cut is not a huge, a huge surprise. Maybe it shouldn't be, but it doesn't mean it's not painful.
And I think, Dean, had we not had that discussion?
Yep.
We might be having a different talk tonight, but you're right, we didn't, I think you made it fairly explicit that room tax dollars were down and final dispersments would probably not be paid in full. So I'm, while it's not comfortable, I think, I think it's reasonable that we spread the pain out.
So we, we not only were explicit about it, we actually engaged during the budget process to try to do something formally that this wouldn't be seen again. No, go ahead.
A couple of things to also consider is that we're a month or two, or shortly away from the much larger first quarter payment that the chamber will get based on our new planning. So they're going to get a big chunk of money here in a month and a half or so bigger than they planned last year. So that's still going to happen. Past, I think in a finance who talked about one past council when they realized they weren't going to make these, which they did consider commitments. They took money from someplace else to help fund over that year gap until payments came in next year. The budgets of the majority of these, or many of these organizations, is miniscule compared to the chamber. The chamber is going to get a very large payment here in a month or so. So I don't think it's unreasonable to say that this is the last payment that many of these organizations will see from the city unless they're approved for something in the future. So those are the considerations I'm putting in, and the reason I felt that way at finance and argued a little bit at finance.
All right. Enough discussion, you ready to vote?
Pam?
Anything more? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes three to two.
I misvoted.
You misvoted?
I misvoted. I meant to vote aye, sorry.
Well, I counted your vote as an aye.
Okay.
Because I can read your mind.
I didn't, I, no, I misvoted.
Lee and Scott voted.
I was, yeah.
Scott's motion, which was three.
Pam, Lee, and Scott voted yes. The motion carries. Three to two.
I wanted to make sure.
Because I voted you as a yes.
Okay, I didn't know if you'd, I was, yeah, I was in the middle of mulling something over in the middle of the vote, sorry.
All right. Let's move on to our Public Safety Committee, and I took this, number one on the Public Safety Committee, this item had been marked to be on the consent agenda. We removed it so that you would have the opportunity to discuss it, and specifically because Ms. Colton had expressed a desire to be here and have a chance to speak to you. Unfortunately, tonight, she's not able to be here, although there are several other members of the public that are here that may have interest in speaking on this item. The council may have some things to say. Lori, you're the chair of the committee, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, we discussed this permit at last month's meeting. There was a recommendation by David Gray that portions of the permit be approved, and if you would look at the map, that's been drawn and attached to the permit application. David's recommendation was that segments C, D, and E be approved, but segments A and B not be approved because of pending litigation. It was felt by the majority of the Public Safety Committee that they were not interested in entertaining any portion of this fence permit application. As Dean stated, Pat was not at the Public Safety meetings last month, although many of her neighbors were, and we did hear some comments from them. So there was a unanimous decision by the Public Safety Committee to deny this application with the intent that Pat would have an opportunity to be heard at- with the intent that Pat would have an opportunity to be heard at tonight's meeting. I had some communication with Pat yesterday, and she indicated she may not be able to be at tonight's meeting and requested that we bring it back to Public Safety in March to hear her comments, at which time we could consider, reconsider the application and bring it back to full council. So that's the request that I had from Pat. I guess at, at this point, I'm, I'm willing to bring it back to Public Safety to hear her comments if the council is in agreement.
I'll move to approve the committee recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the committee recommendation. The committee recommendation was to deny the entire fence permit due to pending litigation and to not entertain another application until the matter is resolved in court and because of noncompliance of the originally approved fence permit. Is that what the committee recommendation was? Is that your motion?
Yes.
I understand Ms. Colton was in the building. Is she still here?
She's not.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
I think you said the most, two most important words, pending litigation. There's no point in us debating this if it's in the courts.
Well, may I? I mean, based on David's recommendation, his recommendation was to consider three legs of that permit that are not under scrutiny at this point in the courts. So, I mean, there is that piece of it, and we had, we had some of that discussion of Public Safety. Can we approve part of this application, which is not really under debate? So that would be my thinking in bringing it back to Public Safety, is would our committee reconsider David's recommendation if we were to hear any testimony on Pat's part, so?
The reason I said that I would rather deny the entire permit was because it's coming to us as a request. Didn't come, but come to us as part of a request or a piece of a request. That if the applicant wants a different permit, it should be re-applied for. And a different permit is a different fence with a different length.
But she'll notice what came out of our committee says she cannot reapply, correct?
I'm not sure the committee really, that was the motion, but I'm not sure the committee has the power to stop any citizen from applying for, for any legal thing. However, that application might meet with the same decision.
I think at some point, a committee can say, this is the same application, we just denied it. Nothing has changed to cause it to be looked at differently. I mean, it could still be on the agenda, but it would be a very short, nothing has changed, it's the same application, denied.
So we're saying we wouldn't consider the same application?
I think I may, excuse me, I believe, if my memory serves, our code calls for six months. If, if it's the same application again, there's a six-month waiting period. So we don't get it, a committee doesn't get it every month from a persistent petitioner.
Let me make a couple of comments, I think, if you indulge me. I mean, the, the idea of approving part of it, I think, Lee, you're a hundred percent right. It is an application. We aren't under any obligation to split it up and say, yeah, this part of it's okay and this part is not. I mean, it can be considered and approved or denied as a whole. That's our right. That said, I think there are parts of this that are relatively uncontroversial. The segment E, that's to the, to the western part of her property, I don't believe is controversial. Any member of the public here that is, segment, segment E to the west?
Right now, I believe, like you said, the permit is for the whole fence.
Well, it is.
I would like to see...
Do you live next to that segment E?
Yeah, I own the property, not on E.
Okay. Are there easement issues over there, too?
No.
No.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So that's pretty much a run-of-the-mill fence permit application over there. And if an application for that segment came, we could take it on its merits and, it, it would be a different thing. The same thing between Ms. Colton's property and the cemetery. What we've labeled here, segment D, that runs east and west along her south side, between her and the cemetery property, I suspect is probably, other than the aesthetics of the fence, may, may be not controversial. Provided she owns the property, and that's been some issue. Segment D?
Yeah.
You've had the survey done?
Well, actually, that's not part of my survey, but it is part of the cemetery. And the, and the survey does go out into the cemetery somewhat. And the simple fact that the permits don't seem to be followed as they're written and can be changed without anyone coming before the council, I think that the cemetery needs to be notified that someone may be disturbing grave sites.
And that gets continued to be regular on our property.
Well, let me just, let me just interrupt you, so you know. The motion on the table is to deny the whole thing. The issue that's come up here is largely one of a, of a dispute, a civil matter between adjacent property owners over easement rights that go back many years. There's, there's a section of alleyway here that, you know, we, we approved a fence permit in two thousand eight. That is right alongside or on property on which easement rights are claimed. That has become a real controversial issue that's currently being litigated. And easement rights are claimed in the same manner for the segments A and B of the current permit. That's what was referred to when, in the committee recommendation, they said that they recommend denial based on the pending litigation. There is pending litigation that may be dispositive about these easement rights. And so we're pretty hesitant to approve more fence construction until that gets sorted out. We could have delayed this whole thing. I suggested that it should come forward, because it's an application that came in back in September and that she has a right to have her day and her hearing. There was a hearing at the Public Safety Committee, and Ms. Colton, as the applicant, was not able to be there. There is an opportunity again tonight. I'm not certain what happened, but she's no longer here for tonight. Okay. So, um, here's your, here's your motion, and I'll put it to you. So Ms. Colton's present now. We've got a motion, we've had some discussion.
May I speak?
Just a second, I'm going to ask the council for that. Do you, do you wish to hear more testimony on this? Do you want to vote on this and let another application come back? Do you want to reconsider, go back to the idea of sending it back to committee? What's your, what's your pleasure?
No, I'll keep the motion, but I'd certainly entertain her to...
All right, so there's one request. Can you come up to the lectern up here, give us your name and address? I think there are other people here, Pat, and I'm going to ask you right off the bat that if we could, I want to hear your position here, so everyone can understand and the public has a chance to understand what's going on. But at the same time, if I could ask you by about a quarter or two if you could wrap up, and then we'll go on with some more deliberation.
Okay.
So give us your name and address.
My name is Pat Colton. I live at four oh five Locust Street. And I have a rental property at eight oh four Vine Street. Come this, I had originally applied for my fence permit, because I was having problems with the neighbors. One neighbor in particular, Ellison, bringing a semi truck in there and wrecking my road. And I'm the only one paying for anything up there. I pay for all the maintenance, plowing, repair, et cetera. I also had a lot of problems with brother Alan. Ellison coming into my garages and wandering on my property. Every time I get up there, he'd call me a whore and a prostitute, friend of my children. You know, he had no success with the police. So, I mean, he was caught in my garages by witnesses, and they wouldn't give him a trespassing ticket, wouldn't do anything to keep him off my property. So I finally, I had to resort to putting up a fence, which I really didn't want to do. It's a big expense, but I need to be able to protect my property. So I put it off, like, for a year and a half, trying to work with these people. And it's just been a nightmare. It's just one thing after another, after another. Things kind of went along. Then, this summer, in June, I was trying to fix potholes. There's huge potholes in the driveway. While I was fixing them, all of a sudden, here comes Mr. Moore and his girlfriend Spears, who I had never met, I didn't know who they were, and they ordered me to stop what I was doing, get off my road. They said it wasn't my property, and I'm like, yes, it is. You know, and he's, and so it was a big argument. He starts swearing and screaming at me. So he calls the police, and they came out, and I just said, okay, this is my property, here's the property stakes. And then I went back up into the apartment and went back to work. And when I looked out, when I was, you know, there's a bunch of people out there all talking and stuff. And when I was ready to leave, Mr. Wyland was out there. And I went and approached him to try to talk to him, but then he just drove off and left. And then, nothing then. I just, I had problems somewhere with one of my children, so I wasn't up there working on anything. And come September, was contacted by Mr. Sundin, who, who asked if I could help. The lady next door, Kendra Dare, was trying to buy the house, and she couldn't buy it without a maintenance agreement. And he asked if I would help put together a maintenance agreement with her, so that she could buy the house. And I said, sure. So the two of us wrote up a maintenance agreement, and they sent it to the mortgage company. Mortgage company said, no, had to have all the easement holders on there, which were easement holders, our Kruenquist, Carlson, the Petries, and myself. They're the three easement holders, and then myself. Carmen Kruenquist insisted that she put Ellison and Moore into the mix, despite being told several times that they're not involved, they have nothing to do with this. So here comes a meeting that we're trying to work this out. Mr. Moore shows up with Hugh Guinn, and a big ruckus erupted. And Hugh Guinn left swearing and yelling that he's going to sue me and sue Aaron Sundin. The next thing I know, I go up there a week later, and here, there's been a road cut from Mr. Moore's property onto my property, cut down all my trees. And I see that there's all kinds of stuff cut behind my double garages. Before that, it was so thick, you couldn't even see Mr. Moore's house. It was very difficult to get to the top of the hill. There's a cemetery back there. I was just horrified when I saw that, called the police. Police came out, and they said, well, it doesn't look like there's any cutting going on here, despite there's sawdust or branches, you know, just stacks of cut-up stuff, stumps everywhere. Said they weren't going to tell him not to cut. Then come up there the next day, and I'm trying, he's throwing crap all over the place, and I'm with a shovel, trying to dig, dig piles of rocks away from the front of my garage where I'm renting. He comes over and starts pointing his finger at me, threatening me, telling me that to stop. This is his easement, get off my property. So he calls the police again, police come up. Once again, nothing gets done, and it's just continuing on and on. Every time I'm up there working on my property, Mr. Moore comes over and starts screaming, swearing at me. His girlfriend's following me around with a camera, taking pictures of me every time. It's been a nightmare of police calls, one after another, after another, after another. They've done everything they can to try to prevent me from protecting my own property. When I had originally applied for the permit, I had applied for a wood fence. And Carmen Kruenquist complained, because she didn't want to lose that extra, whatever, a foot on either side that would take me to maintain a wood fence. So then I went this spring and purchased a vinyl fence, which is very expensive, very nice-looking, so that she wouldn't have to lose any, any distance along the edge. And, you know, it would look really nice. Then she complained again, because it was four-inch posts, and she didn't want to lose the four-inch. So then I called David Gray this fall and asked him if I could switch. I said, I'll take out the chain link out of my yard, and then I'll put the nice vinyl fence in my house. You know, it's a lot of expense to do that, and then take that over there, so then she can't complain, and then she's going to lose any space. So she has her full sixteen feet. And so that's why I switched the chain link. Each one of these, when I went to vinyl, I had, came in and wrote out a permit so that they would know that there was change to vinyl. And then when I talked to David Gray on the phone, I asked him, do I need to come in and write it down? Or do I need to come in for this permit? He said, no, you know, he'd take care of it. They made it just a nightmare to try to put this fence in. You know, it cost me probably over five thousand dollars to do it, because it's just one thing after another, after another. But it's gotten to the point where I couldn't get anything done. You know, the, the police came out and tried to arrest me off my roof. I was up there painting, and I had my fourteen and sixteen-year-old children with me. And, you know, I brought them, because every time I go up there, I'm scared, because here comes the police. You know, I'm worried about what the heck they're up to, and they're trying to arrest me all the time. So it's getting dark. All of a sudden, I hear a commotion up in the parking lot. I call my little girl, who's up by my van. She said, Mom, the police are here, you know, and, and I said, let them call your brother. He came running up there, to be up there. And the police are up there laughing with the Moores and Spears. Then the next thing, because she got the recording of them up there laughing about it. They come down with their flashlights, make me get off the roof. And they said that they were going to arrest me, or they wanted to arrest me, take me to jail for violating restraining order. Now, like, how could I have violated restraining order? I'm up on my roof painting. And they said, well, you parked in front of your garage, and the Moores don't like it. They think you're harassing them by parking in front of your garage. And I'm like, well, this is my property? They said, well, you should have parked on Vine Street, because it bothers them when you come up here. And I'm like, well, you know, if they stayed in their house, or if they stayed in their own yard, they wouldn't even see me.
Okay, Pat, let me interrupt you, because I gave you two extra minutes. And I listened to all that, and you do definitely have a right to come and speak. But so far, I haven't heard very much about the permit before us. So why don't, let me give you about another minute.
Okay.
The permit before us is for the fence along the west edge of Eliason's property, then the short segment along the edge of the Moore property, and then the long west edge of the Moore property, and then between your property and the cemetery, and so on.
Okay.
And the motion here right now is to deny that on the basis of three reasons. One is there's pending litigation over the easement that is claimed on that property between your garage and Mr. Eliason's land.
That is a lie. There is no pending civil, there's nothing in the courts about that.
Let me, let me finish.
Absolutely nothing.
Let me finish. The, there is pending litigation about the easement on the sixteen-foot section, and it is claimed by the attorney for your opponent that when that is settled, that will have a bearing on the validity of the easement on this other section of easement. I recognize it's two different easements, but it's hard for the committee not to take that as at least a possibility, Pat, because it is in court right now.
Right, but that is a...
What's the status of the litigation?
This is what it is. Carmen Kruenquist said that I physically am blocking her property, that I put a fence that blocks her from the easement. That's a complete lie.
But what did the judge say?
The judge went on what, what Carmen Kruenquist and what her attorney said. They said that after I was served the restraining order, I put up the fence after, which is a complete lie. I have documents to show Mrs. Spears calling into City Hall on the twenty-third, saying the fence is done. They got it taken down, because they said that I violated the restraining order and put it up after. That's the only thing. And their reason requesting her order was that I'm physically blocking them from their easement, and they can't remove the snow.
Okay, so let me interrupt you again, and I'll give you a little bit more time, but let me interrupt you for now. And so the motion was to deny the entire fence permit due to pending litigation and to not entertain another application until the matter is resolved in court and because of noncompliance with the originally approved fence permit. That was the motion from the committee. And I know you weren't here, because you stepped out and then came back. So just so you know, that's, that's what we were discussing when you came back in.
Right.
And I want to give you your time, but we, we've also got other matters and so on. And so let me give you about another minute, just to kind of wrap up.
My request is, I mean, the fence permit at this time of the year isn't a, you know, something that's important to have, determined before, like, June or whatever. And I'm asking that I have a right to go to the Planning Commission and to let the Planning Commission know the true facts about what was said. I mean, public safety, thank you. I just think this whole thing has been so railroaded through, that it is just not fair to me. There, also, the bill, or the, the city has, in essence, given more easement when there is no easement there. The survey that he... The survey that he had, and I've told this to David Gray, I provided documents to show that, that there's been altered, forged documents. If you look in his document that he supplied to the city, his survey, one, first, it's unsigned, there's a section on there saying it's noncompliant. Second, the document that is supposed to be a warranty deed giving him an easement, it's not. If you go down and look into the book and what it is, it's, it's nothing to do. All it is, is his title to his property, there is no warranty deed. If there was a warranty deed, none of this would be going on.
Okay, so-
And I want a chance to be able to-
Part of my question to you just a moment ago was, what is the status of the litigation? I guess we, we have it here, but it says, it stated, um, when is it dated?
Well, it's going to, if it doesn't-
January eighth, it says that, "The court orders removal of the fence by the defendants within twenty days of the plaintiff's posting with the clerk of court twenty-five hundred dollars in case the fence must be replaced. Further, defendants are not to interfere with the plaintiff's use of the easement. The defendant shall notify the court when this has been accomplished. This case shall be set for a scheduling conference." "The court also denies the motion filed by Mr. De Mayo to dismiss the temporary order and injunction." I think Mr. De Mayo was your attorney.
In fact, there's a motion- The motion right now is, there's a motion right there to vacate and to throw out this order. And if that doesn't happen, then tomorrow there'll be a stay placed on it, and there'll be an appeal.
But with all that happening-
This, but that has absolutely nothing to do with the supposed easement that Mr. Moore has. I mean, their whole claim, and I've got the transcripts to show that Carmen has lied over and over again throughout the hearings. Their only claim is that they can't plow their snow now, which they've never done one single thing to pay for anything, to repair anything, or to pay, do anything. I'm the one who maintains this everything. And they're claiming that I physically blocked them from going into their garages. Anybody wants to go up there, they can see they have a nice road, wide open space to go into their garages, so. I mean, the whole thing is just a bunch of BS and harassment to me. And I want to go before the public safety hearing, meeting, and have my chance to present all the documents I have to show that this is untrue.
Well, let me stop you right there now. And I have tried to give you a fair hearing, Pat, and we have tried our best to be completely fair about how this has been handled. You just said this has been railroaded.
Mr. Mayor, I asked-
Just stop. The application came in September, this is February, that's not railroaded. In fact, I ultimately came to a point, I said, you deserve your day for a hearing like this in front of us and all the public, for us to listen to you. I've listened to you, we've all listened to you. And frankly, I don't think we're going to hear from all the other people, but you've just made allegations about a lot of people, some sitting up here, some of our police officers, some of your neighbors. They're not going to get a chance tonight to respond because I just gave you twenty minutes to stand and make your case.
Why are you afraid to let me go to the Public Safety Commission?
I'm not afraid of it, this is the way it works. The council will just stop. I'm gonna, I've been, I've been patiently letting you speak, now I'm asking you to stop. The council as a whole will make this decision. The committee spends more time and more depth, listens to more people. They gave an opportunity for every single person who wanted to be heard to be heard at the committee meeting. And unfortunately, you weren't able to be there. But honestly, you've had your piece right now, probably as much or more time than those people got that night. Pat, the council will decide. Now, the chairman of the committee made the case initially, when you weren't here tonight, for sending it back to the committee. And the motion is to deny. And the, the committee is going to listen. And I'm going to stop you, and I'm going to ask again, and you're the one who wanted to hear more. Do you wish to hear more? Do you wish to hear from anyone else? Have you all heard enough? Anyone want to hear more testimony from the public, or from the applicant, or are we ready to vote?
Call the question.
Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Four to one, motion passes, and the application is denied. We'll move on to the park board. Uh, the park board has an item, "Review and consider extending the lease agreement with Jarvis and Sons Associated for City Courtesy Dogs."
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the recommendation from the park board, which was to recommend a three-year extension of the lease agreement with Afton Cruise Lines and to include a language clause pertaining to possible Walnut Street, Walnut Street Bridge construction. I'm going to stop us before we take any action. I think there was some new information from Catherine McKittrick today about the lease itself.
Well, I don't know if you all got a copy of the current lease. And, um, what it says, this actually, the, the first three-year lease was executed in two thousand and four. So we're on the second, and the language really should be changed because it's confusing. When you look at now, the current lease is actually the first extension. This next one would be another extension. And the language makes it sound like it's just the first three years. But that's easy to fix. But what the lease says is that at renewal time, there shall be a review of safety, operational, and financial issues. I don't, it's, Tom's out of town, so I spoke with Deb. I don't know that that was done at park board. Um, in the past, they have provided their lease rates. My only thought is, um, financial issues includes rent, I assume. And, um, the last time it went from nine hundred to a thousand, not huge. But I don't know if you want to look at the safety, operational, and financial issues. I don't think it's been done.
I was at park board.
Oh, you were, okay.
And Tom had no issues at that point with any of that. Now, if you want to change it, I consider changing the motion. He was okay with approving the contract after your review. If you, I'll make them amend the motion for your changes on condition.
Well, the changes I first spoke about-
Did you have discussion about the rent?
Tom, no, with, Tom had no question, so.
Well, the question, I guess, is maybe this is counsel.
Would we, would you care to amend your motion so that, and Gordy, I think you'll think this, that you'll go along with this, that we go from a thousand to eleven hundred? In other words, the same hundred dollar improvement that we did last time?
I'll, I'll change that.
Yeah, I mean, you can make any motion we want to here tonight. I mean, I think what Catherine's bringing up in her review was just, she wasn't certain whether there had been in-depth discussion about operational concerns. I think, I didn't see any in the minutes.
And we had nothing but good things to say about what he's done for the community and the operation as a whole. And the only concern that ever came up was just making sure he had a clear path to the channel. And that was addressed and taken care of. But I'll certainly amend the motion to the hundred dollar increase and move on.
It's my decision, I'm just putting it on-
Here we are, and I'll take that as a motion from Scott, and, and-
For what?
Well, I actually, I seconded his motion, I just asked that he amended.
You're, you're okay with that?
Eleven hundred.
Between the two of you, you want to make a motion and second it, that it would be approved for a three-year extension, eleven hundred dollars is the rate? The other terms the same, or substantially the same, but some language coming up? That'll be acceptable to you in the contract?
Just to reflect the history.
You know, I, I think-
Where we're at in the nine years.
I have, I have not heard complaints. I generally think it's a benefit to us, to the city, to have your passengers and your vessel there. This issue of the Walnut Street Bridge, if that happens, you know, we'll have to work it out. Like I said, at the time that one of these contracts is being put together, that looked like it might be pending major construction, but it isn't at this point.
Well, Gordy has a plan for that, which, with, worked with Tom.
So we can work on that.
We've discussed it.
Yeah. Any other discussion on the motion, Pam? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, thanks for waiting. And that motion passes, so we'll get a new lease agreement with Jarvis and Sons Associated. And under unfinished business, we've got, "Consider amending municipal code, chapter one forty-five dash twenty C, regarding liquor license quota." This would be ordinance two dash ten at our last meeting. Um, I had introduced this as a suggestion that it might be time to lower the quota, and hence make one or more additional liquor licenses available. There was discussion and a first reading. And before you tonight, on the table, I asked Nancy to put a sheet, maybe Nancy, you can walk them through this just for your edification. But there were some questions at the last meeting about the history of this, and I kind of brought up the questions and couldn't answer them, and we couldn't answer them, so here we are. Uh, nineteen ninety-seven, the quota calculation in the city of Hudson was one per seven hundred and fifty or fraction thereof. And we were at our quota, so whenever a new license application came, we considered it as a reserve license. In March of oh seven, an ordinance change was adopted, changed the quota calculation method to one per six hundred and fifty population, and the fraction thereof was removed. Two licenses were approved then, in May of oh seven, for the Nova and for Buffalo Wild Wings. We then have had that, let's see. And that's where we stand right now, am I correct? We're at the six fifty and the fraction thereof was removed.
That's right.
Okay. So there's two ways that you could go. If you lower this to one per six hundred without the fraction thereof, we would have one new license created. If you changed from what's before you tonight in the, in the draft ordinance that's on, in your packet, it was one per six hundred population without any fraction thereof. If you change that to include the phrase, one per six hundred and fraction, and one more per fraction, then two new licenses would be created. My recommendation was for the one per six hundred without the fraction.
I'd like to move ordinance number two-ten with the following changes, and a, and add and fraction thereof.
All right, so that's a motion, and it's to adopt ordinance two dash ten with a change, and the change would be in that center indented paragraph, which is amending one forty-five dash twenty C one A. And the A would read, one license per six hundred population and fraction thereof, as annually estimated by the Wisconsin Department of Administration. Is there a second? Is there a second? Third time. Is there a second? If there's not a second, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
I would like to move, uh, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt ordinance two dash ten with the change in wording from six hundred to six hundred and twenty-five population. There will be no additional verbiage about fraction thereof.
Okay, so there's a motion to adopt the ordinance as before you, changing just the number six hundred to six twenty-five. Everyone understand the motion?
And then we make one license available immediately.
And is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion? Third time, is there a second to the motion? All right, that motion dies for a lack of a second.
Can I ask why we're discussing this? I mean, is there an applicant that needs a license? What's the purpose?
The specific reason that I brought this forward right now is that there is not currently an applicant that needs a license, but that we've had a series of inquiries about, um, do we have more licenses available? And we don't. We've been considerably tighter than the state law for years in Hudson for some various reasons and good reasons that go back to the seventies. However, when restaurants and potential development, potential jobs come to town, and we don't have a license, it has an inhibiting effect on that development. And rather than create a license when a specific business comes, and then we're in a position of creating a license for them after everyone else has been told no, and I bet you Nancy gets, at least on a monthly basis, if not a weekly basis, gets inquiries about whether there are any available, and the answer is no. But when a business comes to town in the past, our tendency has been to create one custom-made just for that business. And I think that's a poor way to do things. By doing this, it'll be available, it would be advertised, we would take applications from, um, more than likely, more than one application would come in, I think. There's a well-spelled-out process in our ordinance that goes through the tax impact, the jobs created, and so on, impacts and benefits to the city. And on that basis, we decide whether we wanted to issue a license or not, and who we would issue to.
So what you're suggesting then is stimulating the local economy by creating more liquor licenses? Well-
And those are your, those are your words.
Well, may I, may I refer to a little history on this, if I might, for just a moment? You and I, uh, Mr. Mayor, have been on this subject years ago when you sat across and on the other side of the table. And, um, I am going to disagree with what you just said, that, um, carving out a liquor license for somebody you, an entity that is known to the council is bad policy. I would say that that is excellent policy. Because we all know that if you just put liquor licenses out there, this council really has, in practicality, no ability to stop any applicant from succeeding in getting that license if there's just one applicant for that license. A person could come before us, quite literally, describe himself as a member of a well-known gang, describe his criminal past as long as it's not alcohol-related, and we would not be able to deny him a license. I have ample newspaper coverage on this. And what we have done in the past is we have waited for good applicants to come to us, and then we've discussed making a license available. That's how Nova got their license, that's how the Green Mill got their license. And the mayor and I argued about that for a long, long time, because he didn't want to give anybody a liquor license at that time, and he's reversed that position. But now another candidate comes before us, or will come before us probably tomorrow morning, and, um, and make an application. And I think that we would find this applicant to be a welcome addition to the community in terms of, uh, holding a license. And knowing the person who's going to, or the people who are going to apply is the only way that we can do our job of exercising judgment on behalf of the city. I think it's an excellent policy, since we have at least one, maybe more, applicants waiting on the wings. We have one here with us tonight. I would say that moving for six twenty-five to free up one license without making any other license available in the near future, because let's face it, if you go with six hundred, and we're at eleven thousand nine hundred population right now, it's, you could count the minutes before we're going to be at twenty licenses, not eighteen. I move that we go to nineteen licenses, one more license. Let all those who wish to apply for it, apply. And this city will, the council will then be able to do what it's supposed to do, which is pick the, the entity that's best for the city in terms of tax base, employment, et cetera.
Can I, can I ask him a question? How many times do you think people or businesses that have called the office, nothing's available, thank you very much, and move on? Why would we impede that growth?
Well, I don't anticipate. I, you and I are on the same page on this, Randy. I want these good candidates to get these licenses. This is the only way that we can kind of have some influence as to determining if they're a good candidate. Because otherwise, quite literally, you have no say. Anybody can come and apply for that license, and because the tavern league is, has better lobbyists than we do in the state of Wisconsin, they're going to get the license.
Is that completely true? I don't think.
You want me to read the newspaper stories? Well, okay, we, there's a, there's a vast difference between state law and our locally controlled license application process, because we have codified criteria that we can use to grant or deny license applications. And we've used those, so it's not strictly true.
The, the law is, there is no property right in a license, um, an unissued license. It's discretionary with the council whether to issue a license. You need, any decision of the council needs to have- You need, any decision of the council needs to have reasonable basis. So you can't be arbitrary, but you've got your factors in your code, and you can make a decision based on those factors. So it's, I don't think it's true. It's not true to say you have no say. Your code gives you factors. There's other best interests of the community give you factors in denying a license, even if a license is available.
Thank you. I just think, Scott, and I know we're somewhat to the same page. But anything we can do to fill some of these storefronts that are empty and entice more tax-based employment opportunities, whatnot, we need to uncuff ourselves a little bit. And having, making two more licenses available so we don't have to revisit this next month, two months from now, makes a little bit more sense to me.
Can I ask a historical question?
Sure.
There was, there's a reason this city had set up, I think before we started reducing it, it was eight hundred? Seven fifty? I don't know if Marty's been around long enough to help us remember.
He's been around long enough.
Well, he's been a long time with the force here. And I know that there was a lot of issues with this city, and that's why these numbers were put in place. Could you give us any background on that, or do you know anything?
All I can, I believe for most part, was they didn't want to have more bars in the town. They wanted to get the licenses set up for the restaurants, being in the food business as well, not just like the downtown bars that we have right now. I believe that was the reasoning behind the restriction they had on their licenses.
There are two main differences in the way we do licenses in Hudson from general Wisconsin law. One is that we have a rule that you will be, at least fifty percent of your revenue will come from food. And so all these new licenses-
Well, just for the beer.
For beer.
The wine is a statute.
For wine. But that one on beer, I mean, that's a little different than the general. So that's a more restrictive Hudson thing. And then for these, we've just, we have granted fewer of them. And it's, it, I think, I mean, you wanna go back, I mean, go back before two ninety-seven. I mean, I was on the council then, and I did object to the process back. I'll owe you one further than Green Mill. I objected at the time of Applebee's. Because we had just turned down an applicant who came and asked for a reserve license. And it would not be fair to say that that wasn't a good applicant. That was a good applicant. We turned him down. We turned him down basically on the basis of the tax base that would be brought to town. And unfortunately, that happens again now. Under our current process, for example, when the new sushi place came, the answer is, we don't have a full license for you. You'll have to open with just wine and beer. Okay, well, now they fall into the question of, when you come to apply to get a full license, how many more jobs are you gonna bring if you have a full license compared to just a wine and beer? They're really at a handicap. But they chose to come to Hudson and create jobs in Hudson just on the basis of the license they've got. And that was a situation back then. Then Applebee's came after we had hoped that they'd come and actively recruited them in some ways for a few years. And phew, we gave them a license just like that. I think there's something that just strikes me as being less than fair. You still have the discretion. You have all that discretion under that one extra. Under your proposal at six twenty-five, you have the exact same discretion as you have under the granting a reserve license.
Yes, granting one license.
Well-
One per six hundred, I think, does, without the fraction.
It would be two licenses overnight.
I suggested that we change it to one. I mean, your proposal and my proposal have the same effect of granting one. But I grant you that once population goes up, then there would be another step.
And we're a hundred people away from that, from going to two licenses. So that's why I say if we go six twenty-five, we know we're not gonna be dealing with two licenses overnight. It's gonna take some time. It's gonna take another year.
There have been several of these applicants that, that, and I finally said, "Look, I'll bring this to the council for a hearing, and I'll make a proposal." And my response, and Nancy will tell the facts, and then she'll refer them to me for a sense of what the council might be. And here's my sense, that I think we're ready as a community for an incremental loosening gradually. That was my impression when we did it with the beer licenses last year. That a little bit at a time is about what we're ready to do. And Randy, you could, it's a matter of definition of terms, whether granting two more is incremental or granting one more. And I think what Scott's saying is, he wants the smallest increment that you can have. But, and I'm fine with that. My proposal is that we do an incremental loosening of this. Not so much that we're looking to stimulate the economy this way. It's just, to me, it just doesn't make sense that we are that much more restrictive than the rest of the state. I think largely the concerns that we had before about that, I don't think exist anymore today in Hudson. And that's my feeling. But that's what we're here to discuss as a group.
And that's part of the reason I brought it up, to compare why we are where we are, where we are today. What problem were we trying to solve, and do we still have that problem? That's, that's the reason that I brought it up.
Well, okay, so here's what happened. We've had a couple of tries at a motion, and we've had more discussion now. Hopefully, thoughts have crystallized. We do have this on the agenda. Let me offer you this. Do you want to wait and have this come back one more meeting, or the floor is open for a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2-10 as is.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the ordinance 2-10 as it's written before you. And there's a second by Pam. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
To be continued.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Were you in favor, Andy? So it's four to one? All right. The motion passes, and the ordinance is adopted. Okay, that takes us on to new business, disallowance of the claim of Steve Carson, resolution 5-10.
So moved.
Need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules in a second. Any discussion on that?
Is this time critical, or do we give this person the opportunity to see this printed?
The sooner we deny it, the sooner the clock starts ticking for them to file their claims.
Yeah, this is a recommendation by the insurance company.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote?
Wyland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Roll call? Yes, Bernard, yes.
Okay, the motion to suspend the rules is adopted, and you may consider adoption of the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution number 5-10, disallowance of claim of Steve Carson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Resolution is adopted. Item B, consider rescheduling the, we didn't do that on consent, did we? Denny's here to explain. We set a hearing, the motion, the item was to consider rescheduling the hearing date for rezoning city parcels of land to Monday, March 29th, 2010, at 6:45 PM. This is a hearing that we had set about a month or six weeks ago, and we chose the date of Monday, March 15th. That is the week of public school, spring break. And we were worried about having a hearing that week. Some local residents might be out of town, and we decided to consider, or to suggest to you that maybe we should move the date to Monday, March 29th. Does that sum it up? Any objections to that?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to reschedule it to March 29th. Any discussion? Do you have anything more to add tonight on it?
My concern is we have to make sure people are out of town due to the spring break, and we wanna make sure that opportunity for people to come to the town and hear each person's views is best for them.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And we'll, motion passed, and we'll move it to March 29th. I'd like to appoint to the park board, Mike O'Keefe. Mike is a longtime city resident, and he would be, he lives at 42 Robyn Lane. This would be to fill the remainder of the five-year term on the Hudson Park Board created by the vacancy, the vacancy created by the resignation of Susie Fallon when she moved to North Hudson. This term runs through April of 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Mike will be appointed, and we'll be glad to have him to serve the city. I have no other, oh yeah, I do have another communication. I ask that we have a joint meeting, a special meeting between the common council and the Sangra EMS Commission. There's a couple items that I'd like to see us talk about and get together. And so I have set that for Monday, March 1st. That's before our first regular council meeting. That means that our finance committee agenda, depending on how long it is, I'm hoping that we could meet at 5:45, do a half-hour meeting. That would leave us about forty-five minutes for that joint meeting before the council. If you know you can't come, and we won't have a quorum of the city council at 6:15, would you let me know so that I can try to reschedule that? With that, any communications and items from any alderperson for future agendas? How about city attorney? City administrator?
Couple of brief things. We did have an election yesterday. Not a lot of people, I guess they knew about it, but we had about three hundred voters citywide. The next election will be April 6th on Tuesday, same hour, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Hopefully, we'll have a bigger turnout. I did wanna start mentioning, and I'll be mentioning at each meeting now through the first part of April, that the US Census forms, 2010 is the, what do they call it, the decennial census? They do it every ten years. The forms will be coming late, mid to late March. We encourage all the city residents to fill them out. We don't get a lot of state money or federal money or state aid, but a lot of those things are population-based. So it's important that we get all of our people counted so that whatever we are eligible for, we can maximize that. So just a reminder, fill them, when you receive them, I believe, a majority of the people will receive the short form, which I believe is about ten questions, and they could fill that out and return. And there will be census workers starting to be around town in March. They'll be, have identification, but they may come to your door to fill out a longer survey. But I just wanted to start mentioning that so people were aware that's coming up.
Okay, we have placed a couple of items on the agenda tonight for closed session. And I think we've completed all our other business. So if it would be your-
Move to suspend the rules.
So there's a motion to suspend the rules.
Close session.
Towards going into closed session, correct Catherine?
Yeah.
We do need a motion to- Motion to go into closed session.
That's what I did.
And that's what you were saying. And it would be pursuant to section 19.851E of Wisconsin statutes to deliberate regarding negotiating strategy for possible purchase of public property for a public safety building, and to also deliberate regarding negotiating strategy for possible sale of public properties at 701 Second Street and 911 Fourth Street in Hudson, and then to reconvene into open session for possible action on those items. Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Motion passes, and we're in closed session. Let's take a brief break. Yep, let's take a brief recess, and we'll meet back here.
I was close.
All right.